If I can ask you. Phones away for our meeting.
Shut it all down.
Uh oh, this is the telephone to only the event we need it and maybe the clock. Okay, so Kelsey is ready. I will call our meeting to order at six thirty. It is Monday, June sixth, twenty twenty-two. First item of business after called order is pledge of allegiance. If you will all join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is approval of minutes in your packet. You should have minutes from our last meeting, which was May second. We obtained a motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Liza, second is I, Jim, any discussion? I see none. All those in, it was a long time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is present to speak. If you would like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit your comments to two minutes. Uh, we do have folks in the room and online, so I'm gonna start in the room. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Yes?
John Wessington, twenty-nine Mason Road. I noticed from the minutes that they're going to be looking, uh, discussing the, using ARPA funds to purchase cameras. And um, I'm really, really not too happy with this. I think we already have too many cameras everywhere. And uh, but what, I don't know, what, what's the use gonna be for these cameras? Are they gonna be looking for speeders? Are they gonna be looking for? What? And uh, viewing will be strictly limited. Okay, uh, who, who gets to view these things? And I, I almost think I would rather have, if these cameras are gonna film, they should be available to everybody. Because uh, otherwise, if there's a question. Everybody gets to see them. Uh, then the fact that they can be edited under careful circumstances, and that, that makes me nervous, the fact that they can be edited at all. And um, but I understand it will be about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars would be the immediate cost for the system. And uh, this will be paid for by ARPA funds, but in subsequent years, how much would it cost to maintain an operating system? Thank you.
Um, so I would just mention that the, uh, the project you're talking about, we discussed later. This is a proposal set to the board, so we'll be discussing that.
Yeah.
Anyone else in the room like to speak? Speak now or have our hold your key.
I'm here for Herb Clark, seventy-six Turnpike Road. I've uh, here probably more for information, but on the assessor, as you know, I've been fighting since last October and keep getting put off and everything. And, and I just don't know how the new assessment will be handled. Will I have to pay higher or will I, I mean, where do we go from here? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Thank you. All right, and I'm gonna go to the TVs. We'll go straight. You're up there. Anyone online like to speak? Yes?
Mike McCoo, fifty-two Clover Springs Drive. The, in reference to the camp, the proposed camera plan, um, I don't, I don't know if you would be able or willing to come to me during the meeting part to talk about it, so I just thought I would make a couple of quick comments here. And if you choose to ask questions of me later, I'll stay available. So um, I read that these plans can be kind of controversial. Eric, are you trying to get me?
And when we get to this, this is a proposal proposed by you to the Board of Selectmen, um, so I will speak to the plan at that time.
Okay, all right. You, you, your voice was coming in and out, but I think what you're saying is wait until it comes up.
I will ask, uh, I do have a, a point to ask you to speak to the proposal.
Okay, all right. Then I will zip it for now. Thank you.
Anyone else online? Yes? Mr. Clark, give me some.
Okay, I'm unmuted. Yeah, I, I wanted to speak to the, the item on the agenda regarding ARPA employee retention. I don't know whether or not this is paying bonuses to town employees. Doesn't say that, but I, I think that's what it means. So I, I just wondered how the town is going to work through the conflict of interest between ARPA funding, which is has town employees serving on that committee. And those people getting bonuses for money that they're voting for themselves, I guess. I, I don't know. I don't know. And then, uh, if that does, how, how would that work? I mean, does that mean all employees would get bonuses, some employees, employees who worked, showed up for in-person, employees who didn't show up in person, not quite sure how that would work, so. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else online who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. There will be an opportunity.
Order. Uh, I said my, uh, I had my say on this camera, uh, on the cameras because this is the way we have run meetings. If I want, I'm not going to be allowed to speak during the meeting. And yet, Mr. McCoo is going to. Is this true?
For clarification, the proposal came from Mr. McCoo. This is a proposal to the Board of Selectmen, so we will ask him to participate in the conversation because this is a direct solicitation to the board from him. So in that case, we would ask him then to speak to the topic, not an opinion or his questions, but merely present his proposal to us, and then the board will discuss from there. That's why I mentioned that he will be given the opportunity to speak later. Not as a member of the public, but as someone directly involved in the process. All right, moving forward, correspondence. You have a list of correspondence in your folder. Um, you should have each received, um, from the school an invitation to the eighth grade promotion ceremonies. And that is one of the correspondence, so there's a ticket for each of you. And the other ones. Any questions, comments? Moving forward to uh, status report. So the steep grant, um, we're still waiting for the contract from DPH. They have been going back and forth, DPH has been going back and forth with the AG's office making legal adjustments, so we're still waiting um, to get the final contract, and we're ready to sign. So much is that it hasn't drastically changed. I will tell you that steep funding for twenty twenty-two has opened projects, uh, allotment up to five hundred thousand dollars. We, um, I'll, I'll be meeting with some staff to discuss potential projects. Um, we have until August to apply, and it could be one project with a maximum of five hundred thousand or a combination of projects adding up to that total. And if we had any regional projects with other towns, um, we could look at that as well. So if either member has any suggestions for potential steep, um, projects, feel free to reach out to Kelsey and share those. We welcome any participation. Um, and eventually, whatever we, um, decide on will come before this board before we move forward. School building committee. Um, our next meeting is next Wednesday. We met last Wednesday and got kind of an update. Um, there was some discussion about an appraisal on a potential, um, project, I'm sorry, a potential private land. Um, nothing has been purchased, but trying to get an appraisal of the property to move forward with that. So the land use subcommittee is working on that. And so, um, we would probably be looking at that next week at our meeting. I will remind folks that school building committee meetings are now hybrid, so you can attend here at the town office building or via Zoom, whichever is more convenient for residents. The Lots of Project, which is on River Road from Paul School to the Mills. We put out an RFP and we did not receive any responses. Um, all of our indications were, um, that with the increased federal funding for infrastructure projects, the scope of our project was too small compared to the amount of work that many of these firms have. They are overwhelmed with work. So we did a direct solicitation at that point, and so we're waiting for that, um, to come back, and then this board will potentially approve an offender. The truck lease, uh, it's been almost a year since we, um, went out for three public works vehicles. We are still waiting on the public works director vehicle, the F-Three-Fifty. Um, that's Troy, my typical weekly question, no building before, but we haven't gotten the cancellation, so.
Cancellation, but as of last Monday, there was, Monday or Tuesday, there was still no building.
Okay. Um, ARPA, since our last meeting, ARPA has met and we had a public hearing on May twenty-four. Um, after that public hearing, several projects were approved that included some items here at the town office building, which was an upgrade for, um, TOV staff computers. This would allow us to have one device instead of two and be able to take that device, um, mobile if the need arose in the future. Some Wi-Fi upgrades that are badly needed in this building, um, as well as upgrades to the network cabinet behind here. Um, those were all approved. In addition to that, uh, summer camp supplement, which will allow, um, up to fifty, youngsters per week to attend camp free of charge. So, um, I, I think this is a tremendous use of our, our funds trying to revitalize that program. It was really in full swing when COVID, stopped us completely in our tracks. So, uh, as of today, they did, um, let us know they have about sixty-one individuals signed up and Jenny and Alan indicated they have about ten spots left per week. There are six weeks of camp. We're allowing for fifty, uh, students maximum per, per week. And this, um, free summer camp is for Wellington residents only, so I think that's important to hear. Um, and so that was approved and in full swing now. There was also a supplement to the fuel bank for twenty-five thousand dollars that will allow us to help hopefully more individuals with any necessary fuel assistance. Also funded at that meeting was funds for a forestry plan for the Mason Road Track and building materials for park structures at Fed and Ruby, um, for the Conservation Commission. The commission also approved funds for the commission's expenses, most notably, and that was two thousand dollars, most notably for legal, um, notices. There's a, a charge to put those in the newspaper, so this will offset those, so it will come from those ARPA funds. The commission met, uh, this afternoon and discussed additional projects, um, including the retention bonus plan for employees, flags, uh, grave markers and monument repairs, a storage box for DPW to utilize for evictions. Those items have been moved forward to a public hearing, not necessarily approval, but at least, um, for the public to hear. So, um, to Mr. Clark's comment, um, employee retention bonus to this board, we approved a portion of it and moved that forward to ARPA. ARPA, um, had a discussion today and agreed to move it forward to public hearing, no approvals, and then we'll continue to have a lengthy discussion beyond that. The next meeting for ARPA is Monday, June twenty-seventh at one-thirty, and right now, the next public hearing is tentatively set for July eleventh. All right, staffing at the town office building. Since our last meeting, um, we've welcomed new staff members. Ivan Runke, I think is how you say his last name, is our new assistant transfer station operator. And Heather Sharpley, who you may all know, um, has been, she worked in the Selectmen's Office. She was Kelsey's position prior to Kelsey, is now our payroll and personnel coordinator. Michael Fitz-Cordova, um, who had taken that position, um, left us to take a position closer to home. So we wish him well. And Rashine Ferentz, um, has just been hired as our new account analyst, and she will be starting on June twenty-first. So that brings us to full staff with the exception of the assessor. Um, and later in this, uh, meeting, one of our items is to look at approving the shared position job description, so we can move forward with filling that position. All right, COVID nineteen. So since our last meeting, um, we still stand at just over sixty-nine percent fully vaccinated in Wellington. COVID cases, we've had sixty-three positive cases since our last meeting, so in a month.
Just what we know.
Um, yeah, and so I, yeah, I have no problem sharing with you. I am one of those sixty-three people. I'm happy to say that my family and I, um, made it through roughly unscathed, but, um, it's still real and everyone is a little bit different. So I encourage everyone still to continue to think beyond themselves and, um, be respectful of others, because while it may be a slight cold to you, it could be life-threatening to others. Um, Wellington, like most of the state, is in the, uh, red area as far as reporting of cases. We have a case rate of twenty-nine, I'm sorry, twenty-one point nine for a hundred thousand as of Thursday. At our last meeting, we were at seventeen point one. And while I read you, continue to read the, read you these numbers, I will tell you that, um, they are relative. Um, they are not a hundred percent accurate of all of the cases out there in, unless you have a test with, um, unauthorized facility, then your COVID case is not counted in these case rates. So I will give you a personal instance in my house. Um, two of us, two of six were, um, tested and counted in these numbers. We had a four-to-home test and we isolated and followed the protocols. So, um, we're really, the state is, um, looking at increased hospital, um, admissions and, and deaths, and, um, I, I want to, um, this has touched my family a little bit more recently, and, um, we've been able to see the impact on hospitals. So once again, uh, thanks to all of the healthcare workers that are still, um, really working overtime. And then some, uh, uh, hospitals are short on staff and they are working tirelessly to, to treat both COVID and non-COVID patients alike. So thank you to, um, all those healthcare workers out there.
Is there any other way to collect positive numbers? Because, you know, the school system sends information out. And I'm sure like, and I, I feel like there might be a way for us to get more accurate local numbers.
It, it's, it's who they're reporting into, right? So their, their home tests, we put a lot of home tests out there on our own through the state, and those aren't being actually reported to anyone unless they go and have a follow-up test. So in my case, I took a home test and then went and had a test to confirm it. Um, and I, um, and, and so that's what happened at, at my house. There's no other way to report them and track them at that point, because I could report my home test, but the authenticity of it certainly could be in question without it being administered by someone, and there'd be kind of a chain of command. I think that's what makes it a little bit more difficult.
And I, and I understand that in terms of like official reporting, but like
From the town?
The schools, the two schools know who's, like, they get calls
Right.
of the number of students that are out. I just, like, I know that's just part of the population of Wellington.
Sure.
But I wonder if there are other ways to get, um, a little bit more of an accurate number, because I think it's, I mean, unless you have a kid, unless you have a kid in the fifth grade, um, you didn't necessarily get all those emails about how, like, every review is dropping, like, like rise, right? So, um, so, so there's a good portion of the community that doesn't know how rampant it, it, it was, especially for like the last two weeks and continues to be. So I wonder if there's just a way, even if it's a less official number, that we can still sort of track either through, you know, uh, the senior center, um, schools, human services, any way that we know of that we can get unofficial.
Yeah, I'll, what I'll do is sit down at the table again, and we can kind of, um, kind of brainstorm how we think any reporting like that could come on a volunteer basis. I don't know that the school would report those to us, but certainly have a discussion with Mr. Stevens about that. And that's only one aspect, right? He's gonna give us a student number. That may not account for siblings that aren't in school or parents. But what I'll do is bring the team back together and we'll kind of go through how we think we could manage a more accurate reporting, because again, when I look at the numbers, I can tell you, I know of six directly related to myself, and only two are reported in these numbers. So there is some. Um, but the, but the state was, you know, aware of that, which is why they include more of a seven-day rolling average, um, rate, and we look at hospitalizations now. And, um, so I can tell you hospitals, uh, full to capacity. Some of our smaller hospitals are, are pretty full, um, but they are, they're, they're working pretty hard. Um, vaccines are making a difference in the level of sickness. So while this current strain is very contagious, we're not, uh, what, at this point, seeing as much severe in those who are, um, vaccinated. But again, an individual's comorbidities makes a difference in, in how they go. So ask folks to, to think beyond, um, ourselves. Right, public, anything else? Um, I gave a lot of recording. It's a lot of things changing. I didn't share with you. We have a lot of mics here in the building, so if anyone would like some pets. We cemented the basement and they found new avenues. So if you come in, uh, particularly upstairs to our side of the office, it smells like wine. Another tree here. All right, so Troy is with us, so I will let him update us on what Public Works has been doing and what they will be doing.
All right, um, all the sweeping in town and the grading of the dirt roads have all been done. Uh, we fixed mostly all the curb that was broken through during time, um, and back, but, um, um, we've mowed the transfer station and the DPW garage numerous times. Um, we're mowing sightlines and we've removed a couple of retention ponds. Um, we dug out waterways. Um, we removed some trees with a contractor on Moose Meadow where we're doing a Moose Meadow project and moved the fence back. Um, we've installed two V, two TVs upstairs at the fire department and taken, um, a little bit borrowed. And so we put those back up. We've cleaned the shop up. Um, we put new ceiling tiles in Eric's office, um, due to the mouse problem.
Nice.
Um, we filled some sinkholes around town and we patched some holes in the road. And, uh, we fixed the Red Oak stop sign on Thursday, and it was thrown again over the weekend or last night, so we replaced that again today, so.
So Troy's trying some
We're trying some new
Legal precautionary measures.
We'll see what happens if it's removed again.
This is, this is the infamous stop sign.
Yes.
The sign and post both go.
Both go. Yeah, so we replaced it on Thursday and it was gone and we're replacing it today, so.
It's not a sign we can't put up. It's a stop sign, so.
We tried something
There's, there's a bet going on in town that we don't know about. We gotta find the source of it. There's some sort of dare on the, yeah, that's going on, because that's
It's a dangerous thing to remove a stop sign.
Yes.
When you dig a street sign, but it's a stop sign, it's
Particularly if somebody's unfamiliar with, like us, UPS or FedEx or a delivery person, right? They got, they don't know, they're just going through the area and they wanna make their deliveries. I could, I could spell this out.
We have enough of the student population, right? But it's only for, like, certain areas, and they head in different direction. I just, it, not only is it incredibly, um, thoughtless, um, it's just so dangerous. Um, and so I think, once again, hope that no one, um, gets hurt. And those individuals, uh, who are responsible, if they're reading our minutes or watching our video, uh, videos, um, please put an end to this. It's, it's no longer about just the money, which is adding up, but, um, public safety. And Moose Meadow Road.
And Moose Meadow Road.
Starting to work there.
To work on there. We've done some edging on it. Um, today they replaced one of the over stone across. Tomorrow they'll do another one, and they'll start replacing some of the tops. Um, we're currently waiting for the fifteen-inch bike, um, the manufacturer stopped production and then they're started again, so we're just waiting. So it could be two to four weeks out before we actually get to do the serious thing and rest in change. All the other products have been ordered in our
On top of taking care of all the things outside of here, because we don't have facilities, um, individual public works has been tremendous in the great mouse hunt of twenty twenty-two. Um, and, you know, that takes away from time here while they're, you know, ceilings are tracking down.
Telling you to get dead hair off this cat.
We did talk about that. At this point, we might be willing to think about it because it's getting to be, John and I had that conversation on the steps last week, um, that we might have to get a house cat around here, because there were three in my ceiling, in three different areas, and they left quite the ransom over. So thank you to Troy and his staff specifically, uh, Jay, for coming out and cleaning up, and Kelsey, Kelsey assisted. Everyone reluctantly going together, so. All right, with, of course, the work that's being done on Moose Meadow Road. All right, old business. Um, so at our last meeting, we discussed and approved the employee retention bonus proposal that I put forth to ARPA. ARPA is, um, discussing that now, along with that discussion is, um, discussion on how they should, um, handle the process moving forward. So I encourage folks to, um, you know, uh, attend those meetings, that, in that public hearing, and, um, hear how the commission, um, feels the process should go. Um, but that left us with the one thing we did not include were, um, elected officials. Because ARPA funds specifically in a couple of places exclude, um, ARPA officials. It is silent in the revenues, revenue loss category, which we would most likely use in this event. Um, but out of, uh, caution, I thought it was best that we not use funds for any elected officials. So, um, that left us to discuss the potential of, um, the bonuses that you see in front of you. In the outline, it's the bottom section, as well as, um, any additionals with any remaining funds in this fiscal year. We are on track, um, to return funds currently. I will open the floor for discussions.
Um, so given what we had discussed last meeting, which wasn't over a month ago, so I think we're all a little bit rusty. Um, well, Troy. One of the things, um, one of the things that I would like to reconsider is the, um, the bonus for Erica. I'm, I still believe, like, my workload did not increase. My, um, uh, you know, time didn't increase substantially. However, as the first selectman, I think that's probably a very different story for you in that your on-call hours most likely were dramatically increased, excuse me. And I think, um, your service to the town is more along the lines of a full-time, well, it is a full-time staff member rather than like an elect, purely an elected official. So I would like us to consider that. I'm still fine with leaving, like, myself off of that bonus. Um, but I, I do think in reconsidering that, if we're gonna go forward with the elected official bonuses, to, to include Erica in that, since, I think you have done a tremendous amount of additional work to ensure that, you know, I know that you went out on weekends to go pick up tests and pick up masks and, you know, other PPE and, you know, on-call twenty-four-seven, and it was not an easy time. So, so I do think that that should be considered to be put back into that, proposal if we decide to move forward with it.
And, uh, last time I spoke, I was not in favor of giving elected official lady compensation. And pretty much based on the argument that, you know, what you're getting into when you, when you run for the office. So it was an easier decision for regular town employees, but, uh, as you know, I struggle with the contractors, staff and elected officials. I still feel the same way.
And while I agree with you, Jim, that we all know what we're getting into, uh, when you take an elected position, right? I would argue that in no way, shape or form, that either Suzanne or Christine, as I register our voters, imagine, um, the work that they would have to do in the middle of a pandemic and a presidential election, um, that, that one election alone. Um, their hours, uh, their stipend pay did not change. There is no overtime hours for them. Um, but their, um, amount of time in which they had to work was, um, in, increased significantly. And, um, you know, they work, uh, for, on behalf of the town, uh, just as hard as our higher staff. So I would be remiss if I did not advocate, um, for those elected officials as well. And Liza, I, I appreciate, uh, your comments. It did, you know, I knew going in what this job entails. Um, never did I imagine a, a pandemic nor the Never did I imagine a pandemic, nor the amount of work that would go into it. I would do it all over again. And so this, you know, certainly would be something additional to account for some of that time. On a normal basis, there's plenty of what most folks would consider overtime in this position. And I don't know that I could count the number of hours and the number of meetings attended, especially during that first year and a half of COVID. So, you know, we all put in a lot more work than we would have ever imagined come any of our election cycles, that's for sure. But I, I feel confident speaking for, for our elected officials that they would continue to do it again regardless of a bonus. But I think it's important that, that we consider something.
I think there's a difference between elected officials that are very truly elected officials and elected officials that really are acting as town staff and town employees. So again, the registrar, the treasurer and our first selectman, so. They're, they're essentially town employees in terms of the services that they provide the town. So I think it is sort of an artificial, I mean, I understand, because the categorization of the positions is different. However, I think it's, when you look at the work that's being done by the elected officials, those specific elected officials, the quantity of the work and the significance of the work for the benefit of the town is no different than any of our unionized staff. They are essential employees. They're essential employees, that's all.
They are. Again, the, the election, there was, I believe in August of 2020, first a primary, and then in November of the big election, which could not happen without Suzanne or Christine, and could not happen in a normal fashion. So besides just putting themselves at a much greater risk, the work that it, it took to prepare the town to safely hold those events was tremendous. So, you know, we don't have to act on this tonight. I am still looking into discussions about this. Typically, we put forth a a budget that then goes to the Board of Finance and is eventually at a referendum voted on by taxpayers. So we don't give ourselves these sorts of things. So there's certainly some concern with us voting on, on funds that directly affect us. And that is part of the discussion that we're having at the ARPA Commission. So I would like us to give this thought while we have some of those questions answered. We're seeking advice from our town attorney as to the processes. This would require from the Board of Finance budgetary transfers. And so on, at their next meeting, I'll be attending them just to let them know where we're at with this. And that this is a discussion, so that's not the first time they have heard it from, from myself and from our board. But we do have one more meeting left in this fiscal year to take action.
So when all else fails, I think, I think ARPA should reserve action what they've done in the past. Make a recommendation for finance or financial, do it. They should do whatever public hearings or whatever they feel they.
So I would say that ARPA doesn't, that's not the normal ARPA process. The ARPA process has an ordinance and they follow the ordinance.
Yes, they do.
So they are having that discussion. I made my proposal.
You always follow the other process, the town is always, we've made that argument.
And so they've had that discussion there and the ARPA Commission will hear from the public at their public hearing. They'll hear from our town attorney on the process. And then that decision will be made by the commission who has the authority on that portion of it. We're discussing merely right now, which is a recommendation as it sits for three. Liza is suggesting a fourth. And then I, I had included both Jim and Liza in the last, in my original proposal. And I think you both removed yourself from that. Okay, so let's give this some more thought now, and I will, I would rather us hold off making any decisions until our next meeting. The next item, new business. We have one tax refund. I will move to refund Jeremy J. Chartier an overpayment in the amount of $206.63. Second, second by Liza, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, aye. All right, now we have several appointments to make. Our soon to be certified, officially certified by us municipal collector. Is that with us in person? She's under the weather, she's on the call. I will not ask her to on camera unless she so chooses. But I will move to appoint Janice Clausen as Certified Connecticut Municipal Collector, effective retroactive to May 19th, 2022, expiring April 11th, 2024. Second by Jim, some discussion. As you all may recall, Ms. Clausen passed her final exam in December. And she had to wait until she officially, she had to be in the position for three years. And that came in April. And then once she officially received her CCMC certification, she could be appointed Certified Municipal Collector. And all of the perks that go along with that. So her term will remain the same. It will be April 11th, 2020, ending April 11th, 2024. So I won't click on the spot, Janice, but if you wanted to share anything, you may do so now before we move to vote. So, all right, all those, I'll start with the, all those in favor? Aye. You're unanimous vote. So I want to congratulate Janice on all the hard work she's done. And her knowledge and experience thus far has led, I apologize, I don't have the number in front of me, but we are well over our budgeting collections for this year significantly. So kudos to the work she does there and she has earned this designation. All right, we have some reporting secretaries that require reappointment. So I will move to reappoint Nicole Fusco as Reporting Secretary for the School Building Committee, effective July 1, 2022, expiring June 30th, 2023. Second, second by Liza, any discussion? Our reporting secretary appointments are for one year, this is why we do them annually. All right, so no further discussion. I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? All right. Aye. Motion carries. I move to appoint Samantha Sperry as reporting, reappoint Samantha Sperry as Recording Secretary for the Board of Finance, effective July 1, 2022, expiring June 30th, 2023. Second by Jim, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Carries. And I move to reappoint Brenda Sullivan as the Reporting Secretary, Secretary for the Wellington Housing Authority, effective July 1, 2022, expiring June 30th, 2023. Second, second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And last, I will move to appoint John Tean as the Representative to the CROG Regional Planning Commission on behalf of the Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission, effective June 7th, 2022. Second is by Jim, any discussion?
Yeah, so, so what happened, did the planning and zoning nominee?
They did. Yes, they came forth. And just for clarification, all the reporting secretaries were first added for their interest in returning and the board chairs of which they serve, to make sure they were satisfied with what we're favoring. Sorry. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. I want to thank all of those for their continued willingness to serve. All right, item C, awarding propane contracts, so this will begin July. First, we received two bids. We should have a breakdown of the bids in front of you. Superior Energy came in with a price per gallon of $209.9, a labor rate per hour, regular $175. Labor rates per hour, after hours of $250. A labor rate per hour on holidays and weekends of $350. A trip charge, if applicable, for normal hours is $100. After hours on holidays and weekends is $200. We asked them to devote, to define a trip charge. The trip fees are for service calls or additional service. The second bid was from high-grade gas service. Their price of propane per gallon was $195.86. Labor rate per hour was 109. Labor rate per hour after hours was 109. Labor rate, labor rate per hour, holidays and weekends was 109. Trip charge is not applicable. So with that.
I guess I'll move to high-grade gas service. The wider.
I'll give you a.
I moved the word high-grade gas service, the propane bid for 2022 and 2023 fiscal year for the town of Wellington, at 1.9586 per gallon of propane and 109 per hour for labor rates, including regular time after hours and holidays and weekends.
Second by Liza. Discussion. Right, so.
One question.
Yes.
Are they our present supplier?
The Superior is our present supplier. The year before, high-grade gas was our supplier, so, yeah.
High grades aggressively trying to.
I speak very highly of high grade. I was kind of disappointed last time when they lost their, they were wonderful to work with. When there was nobody in the dog pound, they came right out. So I would, I'd recommend that we use high grade there. More people.
And, and for me, at this point, I don't know that we've had negative experiences with Superior. But with the cost of increased service across the board, this seems to me to be really a non-starter. If we can keep the loss of cost as low as possible. And even if they do have to come out.
Just one, one trip on holiday or weekend is $550 to get them there.
That's right. So that's significant to us, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you to all of our bidders. The next item is, this is a CIP project, which was to replace the flooring in the land use department. And I'll just update you, I thought I was going to have to update you with some terrible news. We did have the floor tested because there was concern that there was asbestos in the tiles that were coming up, but they did come back asbestos free. So that's a cost we did not have to incur. It was touch and go there. I think everybody thought there was asbestos, including the folks that have the most experience with them. And even he said to Kelsey, I guess it's not as wrong. So we, you, you see it broken down. Originally, we had thought we could get away with just the, the main floor and not the upper part of the office. We did ask them to separately bid out the office so there could be the same flooring throughout, which would assist in a multitude of reasons and safety-wise, having that continuity of floor. So you'll see in the bidders, we had three companies come out, Booth Flooring. Together, the combined project is $12,382. That is over, on current, the budgeted amount. The Daleen hardwood floors for both areas came in at $9,712.41. And Schneider Flooring America for the entire office space upstairs for park and lower is $7,775.25. I will say that they are all, all of the quotes that you have in front of you are for carpet tiles. So this will, I'll let Troy speak to a little bit of it after. But it will allow us for ease of use in the event we need to replace something. They come right up and put one down. And then Troy, can you speak to the moisture issue we have in there?
Yeah, so the other floor that they recommended, they would, they said bold, but the carpet would be better. If something did happen, it got wet, they could peel out a piece or if there's a wear pattern, they could remove that. And then that carpet has like a rubber, it's like a rubber membrane on the back of it. And there's like a little piece of like soft padding and then the carpet itself. So it's pretty durable stuff. Pretty much everybody kind of recommended to use carpet tiles instead of.
Two layers of the floor there will come out.
Will come, yeah.
And these carpet tiles will come down. So I'll make a motion to award Schneider Flooring America the contract of the land use flooring department replacement based on their quote of $7,775.25. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the various quotes and all that. They kind of laid out what they were doing. And I looked at the lane, the lane really laid out what they were doing here. You need to rip this, that, they were, it's a very detailed, somebody put a lot of time and effort into the lane. It called, and the Schneider one doesn't really have a lot in the quote. It just says it's, it's about this amount. It gives you the, it gives you the amount and all that. But then there's a few caveats. Well, it kind of depends on what we, when we get into it and what we rip up and what we find. You know, which is kind of like weasel words, if you will. Or it's, it's a standard wiggle rule, if you will. If I find something I didn't know about, it's going to cost you more. But I was kind of attracted to the delay quote only because somebody looked at it, thought about it. You know, and then I'm, I'm telling you, I would tend to leave that number just for the effort they put into it. You know, it's not the lowest numbers, it's in the middle between the two. But just, just because they thought about it more and that, and that's what has to be grabbed. I don't, I personally weren't the first to. I don't think any of these are.
Right. I will tell you.
Quality, but just, I'm just looking at just the fold itself. That's interesting. Somebody thought about it.
So we, Troy met with all three vendors. I was able to meet with two of the three. I think I might have seen the booth the first time they came around initially, but I'm not even up in the placenta. I can tell you, they all put work into it. The way they detail their quotes is, is what I think we're looking at. I, I would hesitate to say that they use weasel words to get out of something. These quotes were also.
Appropriate choice.
Correct. They were looking at the same floor that was believed to have asbestos in it. And so that is a possibility. So those are things you put in there to, to, you know, protect their quote. They all will tell you, and they all say, these are quotes, right? For budgeting purposes only, says the booth flooring. The Daleen estimate only and subject to change. So they're, none of them are set in stone, which is why my motion was to approve based on the quote of the budgeted amount was $11,500. I still feel confident in that we should be able to stay under that budget with at least two of these three vendors. Unfortunately, Booth is, is right at, at the, at the top. So they did all come out and spend quite a bit of time talking with Troy about the project and about everything that would be done. And Troy, certainly I ask you, I got the impression that they were all looking to do the same thing. And their discussions led to that. They were all having the same conversation about the work that would be done, so.
Troy, you spent a lot of time.
Yeah, actually with the, the cheaper of the one, or he actually came out three times, matter of fact, to check a couple of different things. And he brought the samples with him and he explained a little bit more, more than what the other ones did. Booth, he was very thorough, you know, we're going to remove this, we're going to do that, okay? Well, it was, they all basically, like Erica said, they, they all spoke together on what needed to be done. It wasn't like, oh, we're going to forget that office or we'll pull one layer. There was two layers under there, it's going to be removed. The edging will be removed, the edging will be replaced where it's needed. It was all kind of, you know, explained.
So, so they all put a lot of time, at least here at the location, looking at, particularly the, the low bidder.
The low bidder, actually, I think, believe he came three times. And then he, I probably spent an hour and a half, two hours with them in that room talking about different things that I was kind of like, okay, it's a project, let's just, you know. But yes, so that's.
Well, that's, that's good that they're thinking about that.
You know, he originally, and they all said that, like, uh, the, all the floor is gonna be, you know, have asbestos in it, and they were all, uh, with it, you know, and they, they, you know, well, this is gonna have to be remedied, this, that, this, what can happen, and, you know. They, I don't want to say, they all put their equal time into it.
Yeah. All right. I, I think what you don't see in these quotes was the first communication we received when we asked for a quote from, um, Schneider's was a detail of the things they would do and their recommendations before we even started that process, which was their concern about asbestos and what which led us then to, um, to have the floor, um, tested at that point. So, um, they were definitely very thorough, that's not included in here, in here, as you see, just a quotation. Um, but I will tell you that my experience and then Troy's recommendation, and I should have asked him for his recommendation before we move forward with this. This wasn't a closed bid, this was, you know, our three quotes for, um, procedures. Um, but they, they all take, they all take a lot of time.
I, I would, uh, um, I can't think of the names, I'm just. I would recommend that, yes. I, I've actually worked with him years ago on stuff, and I'm not just saying, well, that's what it was. He remembered me as a little, when I came in, he was like, well, you're grown old. But, but that's not, I mean, I think they all did a fair share on what it is, I don't believe, they backed everything. Um, the booth had a question about the moisture, uh, I brought that question to Snyder's. And he said, we could do a moisture test if we do what like, but that carpet, he guarantees that it won't peels, move around with the moisture that's there on.
All three are incredibly professional.
Very professional, they came out, they measured, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, and I feel we've, we've been good hands with any of the three, um, when I look at it, um, from a purely finance, I've done them to be pretty equal, so when I look at this um, from purely financial aspect.
Answer my questions, your concerns, everyone, thank you.
Uh, so the, so this, if we did need to replace a carpet tile, would, would that be something we'd be able to handle in-house with any of these, or do we need to put back out?
They were, they put that glue down, so I mean, they would most likely have to come out, you know, do that. I don't think it's a huge process, but I, there is a glue they spread and sticks, and then there's different types for the concrete, moisture wise.
Yeah. And we're, I mean, it sounds like everybody's feeling confident, confident that the carpet is a wise choice, not just like with the mold, with any potential mold and stuff. Everybody was.
Yeah, they were, they were all confident with, you know, that was a question I was asked with the, or moisture being damp, you know, kind of in like a basement area.
We've got that issue, we've had that issue.
And they, they, none of them really had their concern with the rubber membrane on the back of the.
And you made some adjustments to the drainage out there, so we're not seeing as much, any wa, any water into, into this. Office with some of the changes. But yeah, I was surprised when they all recommended the carpet tile.
Yeah.
And I thought, I would have thought the exact opposite.
Yeah, with water, it's not a choice, I would have made my personal home.
Materials are changing all the time.
Yes, and these, um, these materials are different than what we might put in our house.
Yeah.
That's true.
And they come in a lot of patterns.
A lot of patterns, a lot of colors, so all these places, and excellent, that's, um, who wants that job? All right, so there was a motion, was there a second? Yes.
Yeah.
A motion, a second discussion, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. The next item, um, you have before you a draft of the shared assessor position. Um, this is the position we budgeted for with the town of Bolton. Um, I believe there was one slight change in, or do they have the corrective one, they, you have the corrective one? The, uh, town of Bolton made one slight change, uh, we both went back and forth with this, they just changed under supervision received. They had different language than town administrator, because they use a different, um, authority. And so now it's, reads, um, works under the supervision of the town administrator and or the first selection.
So where did this job description come from? Is this from Bolton or?
It's, so, uh, the town of Bolton and our, and my office worked on this together. So the bulk of it.
What do you use for guidance?
The bulk of it came from the town of Bolton's job description, I will tell you ours, um, was very.
It's, it's, it's very technical, and I'm curious, like, you know, I know crawling outs and things like that.
Yeah, I, I think all of our job descriptions, um, needs a, a good solid reworking. I know, um, past administration, um, had, had attempted to tackle that at one point. Um, and so it's something that we should look at, but this is very, um, detailed. Um, gives a, a lot of description, we did add in, um, brief language, under license and certificate, that the position would require travel between the participating towns and surrounding areas. So, at, at least, coming in, those folks will know.
And it does say, address the concerns of the residents.
Yes, it does.
I went somewhere, can't find it. But I know several residents came for us.
Yes. Um, and, and who we put in this position, we, you know, Mr. Clyde here, uh, who's spoken to us about his concerns with our previous assessor. Um, we are well in tune to those, and it's very important to me, um, that we find the right assessor, um, who's gonna be do, do right by our residents. And, um, all of our taxpayers, whether they be resident or business, um, taxpayer, that, that, uh, we do this right. So our goal is, um, that both, uh, boards will approve, um, a job description, and then we can move forward, um, with putting the posting out. Hopefully fill, uh, as close to July as possible. Motion. If, um, you don't have any further adjustments or concerns.
I'll make a motion to approve the job description. Assessor position, as written.
Second of my, Jim, any further discussion? I look forward to moving forward with this and getting somebody in, into our office. While we have lots of things to tackle, um, but no, Rachel's been working hard, and we've had the assistance of, um, the assessor in town of Franklin, Rich Laskin, assisting, um, as needed. And so we appreciate, um, all the work that has come to us in the interim. All right, um, so you know, further discussion, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So the next step will be, um, we'll reach back out to, uh, town of Bolton. Let their town administrator, uh, know that we are ready to move forward. And, and keep you abreast of the timeline. All right, so the next is a potential ARPA project, it's a camera, uh, traffic camera request. Uh, you were both made aware in an email that this is a request that has come from, uh, Mike McCoo, um, to the board of selection. He had approached me in the past. Um, at the time, I had, um, some concerns and, and some questions, uh, uh, different than those that Mr. Blessington, um, asked earlier. And, um, at the time, we had some other, um, more pressing, um, matters. And so it, it just didn't make it to the top of a, a priority list. And with ARPA funds, Mike has, um, asked us to consider this. Uh, once again, to, uh, I figured I'd bring it to the entire board. So if, Mike, can you hear me okay, Mike?
Yes.
So, um, I will ask you if you want to outline your proposal, and then we can have our discussion.
Sure, um, I know you all are in receipt of the full plan, so I'll keep it, um, just the highlights. As Erica said, I approached her, um, to, well, this is the third budget season, I guess. Um, but in early, in, early in twenty twenty. And, uh, we talked about it, and she said that there were some questions to be answered, and that there were priorities that were trying to get funded, and it just didn't seem to be a fit. Uh, at that point in the budget season. We talked about it again the next year very briefly, it was a similar situation. In the meantime, um, under Erica's guidance, the town had established the emergency communications, um, group. And, uh, we moved forward with coming up with a recommendation that I believe is in the process of being built out for a communication system to notify taxpayers. And someone's gonna do the dance, and there, there it is. And, uh, so it came around, I started thinking, well, maybe this is a better way to fund it if, um, public funding through taxation was not, um, prioritized for it at the time, or wasn't available. So I tried to get it in, when I, when I looked at ARPA, basically, you know, a, a citizen like me isn't really a sponsoring agency. Um, and obviously, someone would need to shepherd it along. Um, so I did reach out to DOT, um, and I'm sure many of you have noticed that there is a traffic camera at the intersection of thirty-two and seventy-four now in front of Dunkin' Donuts, kind of. Um, that was installed by DOT. Um, they are putting them throughout the state, they are along the highways and some of the exit ramps. I have repeatedly tried to get ahold of their rep, and I can't get them to return, um, my contacts. I was hoping they would give more, more insight to how they're running the plan. Um, and or have a pricing avenue. Um, so in the meantime, I had built the plan based on experience I had working at other agencies. The system that I put together was essentially a sample. It was their options for the different types of cameras, um, and the different types of, uh, setups, whether it goes on an existing pole or would require a new pole. Um, over the three seasons, I did update the pricing, so this pricing is up to date as of April of this year. Uh, and there is, um, it's order of magnitude pricing with some flexibility in it. Certainly, the plan that I put together doesn't have to be the plan that anybody likes, or they may like part of it, or may fund a part of it. It was just an idea of how do we put something in place that is actually going on in a lot of the communities around us? And might improve quality of life. Uh, as I detailed in there, quality of life can be a lot of different things. It might be the presence of the cameras are a deterrents. Um, there's a lot of studies that are trying to figure out how much of that is true. Peace of mind for the residents, knowing that a certain amount of activity, say maybe at the exit ramps or near the truck stop, where there are a lot of people concerned about what's coming in and out, you know, that that might be recorded if it was needed for an investigation later. It aids emergency services, public works, things like that, and seeing current conditions. Um, and, you know, when there are unfortunate incidents like the crimes we've had in town, um, from serious even to the quality of life crimes, like people breaking into cars in the north end of Wellington, what seems to happen a fair amount. Um, there would be the ability for the police to look at, um, data, it might even, depending on the situation, have to be subpoenaed. I did have some lengthy discussions with the previous Lieutenant Palmer, um, at the Connecticut State Police, and he described the position the state police would take on something like this, they would not participate in the design because they don't want any, um, legal issue of being, these cameras being seen as a tool of the police. In, when they're being initially installed. But even, uh, that is a very, um, you know, conservative approach on their part. Um, even with that consideration and the, you know, the concerns that were brought up and present to speak. Um, public cameras, even run by the police, are completely legal, they have passed, um, they're used, you know, within reasonable, um, things, basically anything that happens in public, uh, is in public and has no expectation of privacy. That is a longstanding Supreme Court, um, situation going all the way back to nineteen sixty-seven. Um, if anyone wants to look it up, it's Katz versus US, it's the basis of all of these, um, privacy questions used since nineteen sixty-seven. But the, uh, lieutenant from the state police also did say that they are very useful, that, um, he and, um, depending on which trooper or the dispatch has access to camera systems in towns throughout the state, that they can use in emergency situations. Might be criminal, might not be criminal. Um, so there are a lot of different possibilities for these. Um, I understand there are concerns about privacy, as I just addressed that a little bit. Also, um, you know, as to who has access, the way these systems are typically set up in most towns is live access is available to people like maybe a public works director, head administrators in the town, fire chiefs, to see what's going on in a current situation. Their logins are tracked, what they looked at is tracked, even if they have a cell phone app, everything is tracked, they're very high security. Everything's documented. Typically, the recorded data is not accessible by anyone other than maybe police. And again, if it becomes a criminal investigation, they would have to, uh, get a court order, a subpoena, something like that, to access records so that they, um, you know, are preserving the rights, um, of whoever investigating. Um, this is going on all around us, there are towns all the way up and down eighty-four, ninety-one that are doing this. Um, and, uh, the vendor that I got this order of magnitude pricing from is doing, is continually doing this in multiple towns throughout the state. If you, through, uh, the Yukon area, I'm sure most of us do, when you go down one ninety-five, your car is being tracked, is being, is, is passing under cameras, your license plate's being recorded, it's just a fact of life. A lot of us don't like it. The fact of the matter is, it can be a valuable tool if it's used right, and so that's really the whole, that's the whole, this behind this, I have been involved in multiple cases where it was used very quickly to solve um, situations, safety situations or crimes, and it was very valuable for the public safety, uh, getting, you know, getting people who were missing found, or getting perpetrators off the street quickly. So that's really kind of the motivation behind the whole thing. Um, again, the pricing is order of magnitude, and like, if people were concerned that they didn't want license plate reading cameras, only wanted regular area cameras, as you can see from the breakdown, that would reduce the pricing a lot. Um, all locations there were planned, um, with some discussion with the fire chiefs and the superintendent. Um, there's an option for cameras in front of the schools, um, there are cameras at all the major gateways to town. There are not cameras up and downtown roads recording who's driving their ATV or walking their horse or their dog, and none of that is happening. Um, it's basically who's coming off the highway ramps. And what's happening for traffic around the highways and the major gateways, so. Um, I think, um, oh, there was a question before about editing. No one would have the ability to edit anything. The, um, the system records copies so that it could be preserved if it was needed. And so there's nothing to edit. Um, if someone want to, if someone with authority and credential to have access wanted to pull a clip out, they could pull a clip out to use for an investigation or whatever, but there's no way to edit the videos. There's a, there's a original retained copy, um, which is electronically tracked for, exactly for those reasons, to prove that no one edited. And I think I covered the questions that we heard at the beginning, so, you know, whatever, whatever you, I know.
Mike, all right, so I'll up to the board. I have some of the same questions, uh, Mr. Blessington, uh, had. One of them is, you know, options one through seven, uh, are all on state roads. So this isn't something we can just do without cooperation from the state, we couldn't just put these cameras up without, um, um, the state cooperation, and we, my office has not had any discussions. Um, so, so that's one hurdle. What are we looking at for ongoing costs? We're looking at, let's say this board moved forward with this, and we're looking at about a maximum cost of, uh, just over two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars from ARPA. What are the costs of the town moving forward from that? I have the same questions, who's monitoring them? I would, um, ask Mike, i- if you know, if any of the towns that you know that have these in place are similar to Wellington, and that they don't have any of their own police force, either a police department or a resident state trooper. So, you know, I, I certainly, we don't have that, I would, um, have some reservations about, you know, the potential of, of twelve cameras that need to be monitored, um, by myself, DPW, or our fire department, um, and what the purpose in that would be. And then who would determine the use of the cameras? Right, that's something we would, we would need to, um, outline and define, um, as a board, these are all if we move forward with them. So, um, I'll ask either of you, uh, Jim, comments?
My, my, I have questions also about ongoing costs, uh, data. I guess it's too easy to handle, either with data plow or, or with your own hardware. Which brings up how you wire, how you connect them all together, uh, wirelessly or wire.
So, um, they would be all IP-based cameras. Um, the data would typically be, in, in most of these setups, the localities are not. in, in most of these setups, the localities are not maintaining their own database. That's different for large institutions like, say, a university or a big city where they have a huge IT infrastructure. But otherwise, these are managed, there are software companies that would, that this is their specialty. And uh they manage secure. Databases that meet all the legal requirements, um so that if they have to be used in a criminal situation, all of that stuff is met. So there would be some subscription cost for the data capture, data storage. Um, there would be, if a camera broke a year from now or something, there would be, you know, a couple of thousand dollars depending on the camera to replace a camera and installation. They are almost plug and play. There is some programming required, obviously, because of the security that's involved. But the costs, um, the costs are very small compared to the original installation. Uh, to Erica's comment about the locations, yes, it does take uh essentially like an MOU um with DOT, and that's why I have been trying to get ahold of the DOT person who is actually responsible for that camera that's at thirty-two and seventy-four. Um, to get some information on that, and I just simply can't get him to return any of my contacts. And I know a person for it. I, I verified that. Um. So there are, there certainly are some ongoing costs. Uh, my reason for bringing this here, obviously, is to get someone to be the sponsor, if you will, to get it into ARPA for discussion, to get it to the taxpayers for discussion. And uh, see if there is interest in it and, and make this initial cost something that's not borne directly by the taxpayers in the budget. That answers some of the questions.
My last concern is I, I just, I, I have, I mean, a lot of my relatives and all that came out of Eastern Europe, so having the government monitor, you know. Is a, is a touchy subject. I mean, they, they flipped, they left that area of, of world for a particular reason. They, they didn't want to have that. And they came to this area of the United States uh to avoid that. Uh, so I, I have a problem, at least philosophically, about us putting up cameras and monitoring our citizens. There's a lot of good, you can, you could say it's, it's kind of his causes, but I also think.
I mean, does anybody drive on eighty-four or nine, like, that's happening, right? Anyway, like, this isn't a new concept. It's not a groundbreaking concept. It would be adding something that's already existing to Wellington, something that's fairly universal that's happening everywhere. Um, especially on our highways and roadways. I mean, there are some cameras that we, the public, can access. To look at the highway cameras, we can look at traffic, that they weren't put up there so that we could look at traffic. They were put up there so that somebody could monitor the conditions of the road, and we could track, we could, we had record if there were accidents, we could see what happened. Um, so to me, this, I think some of the concerns and some of the questions brought up are a little, a little bit of a stretch in terms of um concerns about what it's for and who we have to get permission. I don't think it's. I mean, first of all, it's a request that would go to ARPA, which then would go to people to discuss. We're not asking if we, the three of us, want to do it. There is a resident who has for multiple years wanted this to be moved forward. This is an opportunity to move it forward at no cost, direct cost to the town and um gives the taxpayers an opportunity to weigh in and have a, have ans- get, get their questions answered.
But could have ongoing costs, right?
It will have, it will have.
We could.
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt, there will be.
We could explore that.
Right, so we can, we can answer that, we can get that question answered. I just largely, though, I think. You know. Honestly, there's nowhere you can go and not be monitored by a camera, like, ever anywhere in, like, in this country. There's nowhere you can go where you're not really constantly being monitored by a camera. So that argument to me is sort of a moot point. Um. I think when you're talking about the benefits to the town in terms of um the potentially keep, you know, keeping track of road conditions, traffic accidents. The lights and the light.
There a camera for that?
We had, you know, two years ago, we had one major crime where, at that point, I do recall some the, when we had that three hundred and sixty person um open forum, that this question was asked. Whether there were any um cameras on the highways that could have tracked where this person came from and where this person was going, and that was when we didn't have very much information to go on. So. I mean, I think there's is, will there be some continuing costs potentially? I don't know what that is. I think that's a question that can be answered. But I, I don't, I don't see malicious intent here. Um. And I, yeah.
Erica, could, could I just address one of the other concerns?
Mike, and then we'll get back to you. Okay?
Okay.
We're right down the middle of the two of you on this topic. I, I agree, um, there's you know, really out in public, no expectation for privacy, and everybody we know carries one or more of these, and so that's all gone. Um, I do have a little bit of concern um to both sides, right? So I look at the locations of these, and we're not really monitoring our residents. We're monitoring anyone who comes in and out of Wellington. So um, to, to someone else's point, why aren't we going to put them on roads in town? Um, but only at these major exit points, right? So um that, that somebody might say there might be more benefit to having them on some of our roads and not just the, the main thoroughfare. I may or may not agree with that, but, but I think um it's something we have to be prepared to answer. Mike is asking um for this board to support this proposal, so we would be voting in favor of it. There are multiple questions that need to be a- answered when we go before ARPA and then before the public. And some of those questions are, is this something that has been on a CIP list? Is this something we've considered before? What are the ongoing um budgetary costs? And we don't have those yet. So while uh we may or may not be ready to move this forward, we don't have any of those answers. Um, or even what that process would be or would look like. And there are, there are um going to be costs uh as associated with um the storage of uh whether it be here on a server or cloud base, that will be a recurring cost. If someone hits one of these poles, these are all at some pretty major intersections. I would defer to our um EMS, and Mike has some information on that as to you know, number of accidents in and around these locations. A poll comes down, not only replacing the camera, but the potential pole as well. And, and again, our lack of um law enforcement directly in Wellington is probably one of my biggest concerns. And who, who's monitoring it? And how are we going to use that? And while those things can be determined moving forward, the fact that we don't, we haven't had a, a hearty, robust conversation makes me pause. But at the same time, I want to hear what the public has to say about this. I want to hear what they have to say, and at this point, the way to do that is for it to be part of a public hearing. But once we put it with our stamp on it to ARPA, we're saying we fully support it. Um, and if it's voted on and approved, they're going to move forward, you know. I'm trying to find the balance to get many of the answers before we move forward to spend a potential two hundred and fourteen thousand.
So I think part of that can be, like, I think part of what I'm hearing is that you need to help get some of those answers.
Yes, that's correct.
So if we, as the board, are not assisting to get those answers, we're never getting at those answers, and thus never anything will.
Eleven of those twelve items are on state roads, right? Even the exit on ramps and off ramps.
Yep. Yeah, the Loci Road one is.
The only one that's not is the, is the one in front of Center School. So you might not have the, you might go through all this and might not have the authority to put any of that, any of those.
Fine, yeah. We won't know, we can't. So, so do we say, well, then we're not going to push it forward because we haven't asked the question yet, and they might say no? That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense to me. To say they might say no, so let's not consider this an option. I, I'm not.
I mean, our approach, could it be, do we get some of these answers and revisit it before we move it forward to ARPA? Or do we move it forward to ARPA knowing that we're going to put this number in front of you so you can include it in your larger, broader picture? But we still have lots of questions that we need as a board answered before we could.
So then let's answer some of those questions.
Right, before we send it to ARPA.
If that's going to be a barrier, then yes, I say, let's act, let's actively work towards answering those questions. Um, and determine whether or not any of that is a, an actual legal barrier or something that we're putting forth as a barrier before we even give it actual consideration. I think that's my concern. Like, let's give it actual consideration before we say yes or no. Like, some of these might be, the town, it might not give two hoops about whether or not we put poles and things up on the road. That, they might love it that we're doing.
No, but I'd give a who if our residents don't want it, and I think they approve it, and then, and say like, okay, well, I approved it, but they don't want.
Well, that's.
But that's the process. That's what I.
I'm not. You can use ARPA like, like, yeah, yeah, as an advisory to either the board finance or board selectmen. Then you bring it to town meeting or something like that. So, or some combination, get your.
So, you know, I'm not philosophically opposed to this, right? So I'm not saying that. Um, and I want to find the most effective way to get it in front of the people and in line in the ARPA money at the same time. So um, it's whether or not we feel like we want to move it forward and then share with our, that we still have lots of questions. But we want to get in your queue, and we want to get this before townspeople. Um, but before, maybe before you approve a funding, maybe they receive it, hear it, move it to public hearing, but before they approve it, they hear us say, we still have questions to answer. So maybe you don't approve the funding until we can answer some of those questions, but then it gets at least in front of them to get in front of the people. I think this is something we definitely, we need to hear from as many residents as possible on, because some are going to feel one direction and some are going to feel the other, and that needs to get weighed into this decision. I have lots of questions that need to be answered, but not necessarily to prohibit the process, the us choosing the product, the project, just questions to be answered.
So I think we do.
So.
An active process. And some of those questions answered that only we, as the board of selectmen, can do on behalf of the town. And um, I think there's value in considering breaking it up into different chunks, so it isn't necessarily the maximum cost that's proposed here. So like, optional for, for example, I know we do have some cameras around this building and around schools, so that might be a piece that gets taken off. But I think to give it genuine consideration, we, as the board of selected, need to take a few more steps to answer some of those questions that are pending that have been raised today. And incorporate that into this plan. And then determine whether or not it's something that's going to go forward, but.
So I agree with what you're saying, but would you be in favor of us taking a potential vote to go ahead and put it forward um as a work in progress to the ARPA commission, so they can, A, um, we get in, in line for some of those funds. They saw many things that haven't been approved yet, um, but that number is getting smaller and smaller. And, and that then, any additional questions they have that maybe we haven't thought of, we can, we can get the answers. So before it gets to a public hearing, we're prepared for those. Um, I, I too look at the schools and not because of the current infrastructure we have, but holding off on spending dollars there until uh this, you know, we have a very active school building committee that has um set a timeline for a potential vote in the fall on a project, one way or the other. So before we go and, and put two of these rather expensive cameras in two places, we may only need them in one, and where is that one place? Is it all school or somewhere to be determined? So um.
So to answer your earlier question, so one of the benefits I see in the ARPA process is we can put forward something. So let's say theoretically, we voted to move this forward. At any point, we can go back to ARPA and say, we would like to take this off the table, or we would like to modify this. This isn't a contract to do anything. This is an agreement that, yeah, we're going to further consider this and see if it's something that goes through the budget. So um, that is why I'm more adamantly in support of continuing to move the process forward, because this is something that, it's not the first time it's come up. Um, Mr. McCru is not the only person who's ever brought this kind of a, a concern up to us, or the idea of more monitoring on the roads in and out of town. And this is not a commitment to do anything. It's other than to further consider it and move it forward through a process that may end up not approving it yet.
I think what comes out of public hearing, may determine what direction they go, or we get some answers that say, no way, we're not interested in partnering with you on this. And then it really, you know, stops us dead in our tracks, and then we have to, to change our mind. So I will uh make a, a motion to um move forward the proposed public safety uh traffic camera request to ARPA.
A second.
Alright, further discussion? I would um when, when I move this forward, um I propose we, we take out the options for the schools currently, or a place that I'm hold, I'll leave it included, but let them know that we um you know, worked so many discussions. And there'll be questions we won't be able to answer, and I'll make that known uh when we speak to them. But I think this is the best way to get this information out ahead of us and into the public while we still work on our end. Because when it's approved from ARPA, it's going to come back um to the board to manage. We'll have to choose a vendor, we'll have to do all of those steps. Um, and we may have different answers. They may say, yes, we completely agree with this, and so does the public. And then we've gotten some answers and say, this is going to happen, and, and we can um draw back from there. So. There's the motion on the table. May present discussion.
So does your motion include removing the?
I didn't, I didn't give up on that, but if you're ho- open to that, then I will present this um with one of two, with leaving it as optional, but that we are leaning towards.
Yeah, that's.
Leaving out the schools. I'll do that more in language than in text. Any further discussion? Alright, I don't think, so last time we were talking about this, I know for a fact it's not. Alright, all those, uh, no, Kelsey, that's her real call.
Hi.
Jim?
No.
Erica? Yes.
Can I just, uh, can I just help answer one question you had, which may help moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, so I did, while you were having the discussion, I realized that it was an error for me to have not included the ongoing cost. Um, so I did send a message to the vendor that I got order of magnitude pricing from to try to help out with that. I will forward any information I get to the board members immediately. And um, the other thing too, which I think was really important in the comments before, is traffic enforcement. It is not legal to use these cameras for traffic enforcement in Connecticut, so no one's going to get a red light ticket. No one's going to get a speeding ticket from these cameras. It's against the law in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do appreciate the consideration. I know it's not a simple topic.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move along to item G, transfer station fees. So you have, in front of you should have uh, are they the current fees? Yes. So we have a current fee schedule that was approved in October of twenty seventeen. And um mid near up has approved new vendors for a handful of items and made, which uh will make for some potential changes. Um, and uh unexpected costs um to the town. So uh Troy has proposed some changes. We would need to approve them, and then they would need to go uh to be approved at a town meeting for the transfer station ordinance. So we can adjust the fees as we see fit, and then they have to be approved at town meeting. So um I'll run through the quick changes, and then Troy can speak to them specifically. Tires, we currently accept tires up to nineteen inches, and we charge two dollars. The new proposal is five dollars, and that's based on the amount the vendor is charging us to take them, correct?
Uh, can I correct you?
Yeah.
Okay, so right now, we did, somebody brings a tire and under nineteen inches, they charge two dollars. We pay two dollars to get rid of it, so we make no money on it. The new vendor would charge us three dollars a tire. I proposed the five dollar. It can be cut to three dollars or it can be cut to three fifty, wherever. But if it's three dollars, the town will make zero profit on it. I understand it comes out of the taxes. But still, it's, it's a cost. They add a surcharge now to it, so they don't, they add thirteen percent charge on whatever the bill is when they pick the tires up. So that's an unknown cost.
And this new vendor um refers to them not necessarily in up to nineteen inches, but says a small truck or a car on or off the rim.
Yes.
Before, do we only take them off the rim?
We would take them off, yeah, both.
And in similar fashion, truck tires, um, the proposal is to increase that from ten dollars each to fifteen dollars.
And it would cost twelve dollars for the town to get rid of it. And it would cost $12 for the town to get rid of a large truck.
And still no tires over 24 inches. Um, and then the next change is in propane tanks. Correct?
Yes.
Do you want to talk to us about that?
The propane tanks is not.
Oh, because it wasn't on our fee lists prior.
All right. So right now.
Oh, thank you.
So the new one right now would basically.
From the last page, uh.
There would be a, for a 20 pound tank, that's a regular grill tank. If the tank is like dented or no, there would be a $3 charge to the town. Um, if the tank was acceptable to them, when they picked it up, they would actually pay $7 a tank or to the town. But nobody knows what, how bad or damaged it's under there. And so if we charged it, everybody got $3 to get rid of that, no matter if the tank was in fair condition or not. You'd be okay because if they say, no, that tank, we don't feel that it's acceptable to town. They're going to charge the town $3 per tank. Every time, basically.
But you're proposing $5. We collect $5, right?
Wrong. It's, that's a mistake. That's it's.
That's what happens. Lights go off. All right. So you want to move it from, from us not charging at all?
No, right. Yes. Cause right now.
Not charging it out to charging $3 for a propane tank or 20 pound propane tank.
Yep. And anything larger than a 20 pound grill tank is, should be $20. They're, they'll charge it down $20 to pick the tank up.
And right now, do we take, do we take those big ones down?
We take up to like the 40 gallon, like the 40 pound ones and then that it all works out with Mighty Flame, how they charge. We never get a bill at all. It's always that they break it down. But we talked about this last year about it. So, but this year it's Mighty Flame is not on the contract anymore. And Blue Rhino is the one that will be doing the contract.
All right. So, so the biggest changes I see, it's, you know, small amounts in the, in the tires, but this would be all new and propane if we started charging $3 and then $20. Cause they'll only take the ones that are in good condition, right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll take the bad tanks, but they're going to charge the town $3. If they'll take a good tank, if it's in good shape and whoever inspects them, they'll pay the town $7. But if the tank is, however, dented, not, it's, it's a fine line because nobody knows what a good tank is going to be when they pick.
Right. So if we don't charge anything.
We could be.
Losing quite a bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but I'm sorry, I'm confused about the 40 pound tank. It says $20 here. So that's, will be a charge?
Yes, that's what they're going to charge. Tanks larger than 20 pounds is $20 to the town. So anything bigger than a regular grilled sized propane tank will be charged $20.
And do they pay us for the good tanks that are over? Okay. So all of those, they charge regardless?
Yeah.
Um, okay. I understand. So we're passing along that cost?
Yes, basically.
Okay. Um, can I, of course, add something now? Okay. Uh, I would, I would not propose it be a profit making. I mean, I think it's going to be fairly minimal anyway, but I would suggest that if they're charging us $3, we charge $3. Rather than it being a profit proposition for the tires. I mean, I think that's been our past practice. I unless somebody can give me a really good reason why to increase it so that it's a profit making. I would leave it as what our, as what our cost is. Um, so we're not overcharging residents. That's for the tires specifically. For the propane, that's a little bit more sticky because some you pay, some they pay you. I don't know how to justify that, but I mean, I think $3 seems fair. But the tires, I feel like we know that they're going to charge us, so we just pass along the charge rather than.
We lost money on tires sometimes?
Well, yeah, we are because it's, they're paying us, they're charging us a surcharge. So 13% of whatever the bill when they pick up the pops tires, we're now charging us 13% surcharge. So when they pick up a hundred tires, whatever that percentage of we pay for.
So we pass along the exact cost, but then we eat the, okay. And the new vendor, they'll have
No.
A surcharge as well?
Yeah. So what's the surcharge? What's the surcharge? Just for fuel? Yeah. They said, oh, it's our, it's our fuel cost, fuel run and drop.
Yeah. Therefore, their cost to come to us.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm favoring the reimbursement of the cost.
So.
Should be the tire or propane business. We should be recovering our costs.
But I think Troy's proposal is to recover some of the surcharge. So we're, we're passing along just the cost of the tire and then we're eating the, the surcharge. Um, and where is that built into our budget?
It's not.
It's not because we pay for, I mean, it's not considered a part of our bulky waste. Um, a budgeted item. And so.
Taking my phone for mathematics.
That's fine. Do you feel like that small amount is enough to cover the surcharge?
Very well.
On average of tires we've done in the past? Yeah. So what you're proposing is that we pass along all of the costs. And, um, in this minimal increase is really not to, for us to profit. It's how, it looks as though we're profiting because we pay less.
Yeah.
But we pay per tire and then we pay a surcharge. So I think that's what your proposal is to cover the surcharge. That's different to neighbors.
So if and it's not a lot of money in the grants scheme, thanks. We're talking about $2 difference per tire, per person. But, um, like if we have a 13% surcharge, then that would mean if we charge $3.50 per tire, we're covering the 13% surcharge. Um, right now, this is a 66% surcharge that would like 66% off charge for a 13% surcharge. So I think if we want to cover the surcharge, make it 350 and that way we're covering the surcharge. I know it seems like a dollar 50 seems silly to go over, but again, when we're talking about, you know, all of the residents of the town and I don't know.
Did you, how many tires we take in an average?
I have any idea? So Troy's proposal is $5, $5, no, $3, you're saying?
He said $5.
Yeah. I mean, the averages was number, it just threw up.
Right. He put out a number. You said your fee is $5 and $15 compared to 2 and 10. And then, um, $3 for small tanks and $20 for large tanks.
Yes, that's what the new vendor is going to charge. So somebody brings the town a 40 pound propane tank, they're going to charge the town.
Right. And on a small, we may make a little bit of money, but that's not the intention. It's, we don't know subjectively
Right.
how they're going to determine what's a good tank and a bad tank. I think they're trying to weed out bad tanks at this point. That's the way it sounds to me, but I don't. So for, um, information purposes, the mid era price is going to affect on July. But we have to go to a town meeting, uh, which will.
What's, what's the current price that we pay per large tire?
10.
So then it would be like, oh, so if we went to 350 and 1150, then we're ensuring that we're covering the costs.
No, because they're charging $12.
I thought you said 10.
We are charging 10. The new vendor is charging 12. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
The new vendor is going to charge 12.
And a big tractor tire or something like that is a $12 charge.
But we're not taking those still.
That's, so the $15 is close, but yeah, anyway.
So one is $2 more, one is $3 more. Their increase from our current, but, um, slightly less over the new vendor cost. So again, we can, um, propose a fee schedule that then has to go to town. Jim?
I, I think I made my point about covering our cost. I don't, I don't think any more, anything more than that.
So are you, but?
I'm, I'm in favor of making adjustments to cover.
Okay. So the, the adjustments Troy is proposing.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I get the thing about the town. But it's costing. Yeah, I, I get the thing about the town.
But we're losing money now.
My votes, yes.
No, the tanks right now.
The tanks right now are.
But that's changing.
Yeah. And that, that changes on July 1st anyways. So it's like. Yes, July is. And Midne'erak handles the tire vendor. They handle. Yes. They, yeah, it's voted on the committee of Midne'erak to, to put all these list of vendors.
Troy sits on Midne'erak. So, you know, we, we have a say at the table.
Yeah.
As well as the town. All right. So I will make a motion to adjust the appendix F, the fee schedule of the transfer station to increase, uh, the smaller tires to $5 and the truck, uh, truck tires, 19 and over up to 24 inches to $15. And add, um, 20 pound propane tanks, $3 per tank. I'm sorry, $5 per tank. No, no, three. This one's thrown out. And 40 pound tanks, um, to, for $20. A second. All right. Second by Liza. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
All right.
I. Motion carries. So you'll see this on our next call for town.
We probably should know because no change in mattresses or box springs or batches of clothes, some recliners, some air conditioners, TV wires. As people finish their spring cleanings.
When this, when this gets to, um, town meeting, we'll talk about, we'll highlight the changes, but everything else for me. All right. Thank you. Let me get back to. All right. Next item is, uh, Cato Rock Remediation Grants. As you know, we now own, um, Wellington's portion of the Cato, former Cato Rock property. Um, town of Ashford, um, owns the majority of the adjoining property. In the past, we, um, jointly applied uh, to DECD for different, um, grants. The town of Ashford puts through the grant and we do this jointly. Um, we applied last year for remediation grant and we did not own the property, um, nor have a, a project in mind. And thus we, um, did not receive a favorable grant. So we, um, would like to once again apply in the next, uh, grant round with the town of Ashford. They have already moved forward, um, with the motion I'm going to make, which is to approve a joint grant application with the town of Wellington in the amount of $300,000 to the Department of Economic and Community Development for the remediation of the former Cato Rock property. Did I say town, uh, with the town of Ashford? Which is town of Wellington. That's everyone to work with themselves. We're in Ashford very much. Seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
So a new piece of information, I was, um, we, we now own our portion.
Correct. Yes. Through tax, they have both towns own on that. And so we don't know if that will make it favorable. We still don't have uh, any project in hand. So it's not, it's the way of shovel ready project that tends to make a grant, um, get more points. Um, but we figured we would attempt to get the remediation, um, done and then town's going to determine what they want to use. I think we get a little bit easier.
Might make it easier sale.
It might. Okay. So seeing, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? I, I. Motion carries for this is the town of Ashford and thank them once again for, um, five of the grants. All right. That brings us to present to speak, folks. If you would like to speak, I ask you to state your name for the record and limit yourself to two minutes. Is there anyone that started in the room again? Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? No. Mr. Clyde, did you want to speak? No? Okay. All right. We'll go to online. Anybody on the call who would like to speak? Mr. Clark?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I had a couple of comments, I think. Uh, so I think town employees voting on their own bonuses is wrong. Um, I would hope that the town leaders will show good judgment and either ask town employees who are members of the ARPA committee, um, to abstain from voting. Or that the town employees bonuses be approved outside of the ARPA committee through the board of finance. Either approach is, 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 is a good idea. I don't, so I think that's just prudent. Uh, the first selectman asked us to attend ARPA meetings. We can't attend ARPA meetings. Because ARPA meetings are held in the middle of the day, um, taxpayers are working. I would ask the board of selectmen to propose an ordinance to the townspeople for approval in a town meeting, mandating that public meetings be conducted after normal business hours when the public can actually attend the meeting. Uh, townspeople shouldn't be able to, uh, townspeople should be able to, to attend ARPA meetings, not just the, the ARPA public hearings. Same thing goes for CIP, which meets in the middle of the day when the townspeople can't attend. Um, so regarding cameras, I agree with the first selectman. I'm not sure either. Uh, I, I, are, are those cameras available? Are, are those camera materials available to the townspeople? Um, you know, is that, can you post that on our, on the website somewhere? So that we can have an idea of what this means. Um, and then last, second to lastly, that the board of selectmen agendas, uh, if we could have them be more carefully written, uh, to inform citizens, discussion of transfer station fees is quite different from a proposal to increase transfer station fees. The same thing with the, with the cameras. I didn't, I had no idea what those cameras were, um, just cameras. Um, so lastly, um, I saw that there's a parcel of land available for sale, uh, to, next, right next to Hall School. And I was wondering if the SBC was aware of that being for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Else on, uh, Zoom, who would like to speak? If so, identify yourself for the record, please. Go ahead, let's go and play. They don't have the ability to mute themselves. All right. We will move forward, uh, with good and welfare. I have several items, so I ask you to stay with me. Um, it is with, uh, great sadness that I share the loss of three former, um, town, um, or board of ed staff members. In, in the past month, uh, former resident Pat Godbout, who was a former town clerk and served for almost 20 years, passed away in early May. Not long after, um, the former resident Marlene Carr, who, uh, many of you may fondly recall is your kindergarten teacher. She was a kindergarten teacher for over 30 years at Center School. She helped us start the kindergarten program at Center in 1968 and saw it through until her retirement in 1999. Um, most recently I've heard, uh, many residents speak very fondly of their, um, time with her in kindergarten, um, whether it be in the cafeteria, in a regular classroom, or at the firehouse and kindergarten cir- serve, kindergarten circus that she helped, um, run. And, and most recently, um, current resident, uh, Mr. Richard Claus, who served as dog warden, uh, in the community for 28 years. Their service to Wellington left an indelible mark and will all be remembered with fondness. Our heartfelt condolences go out to their families and we will keep you all in our prayers. All right. I have, uh, I'm going to follow that up. I'm going to fill a little out of order. Follow that up with Mobile Food Chair will be here, uh, this Wednesday, June 8th from 11:00 AM to 11:30. Um, as always, please support our small businesses and restaurants. Um, I've noticed as of late, many of our, um, community businesses are having to close early and adjust their hours because they do not have staffing available. Um, so please, uh, just, you know, take a minute to be, uh, kind when you're there. They are not, um, staffed in the way they were pre-COVID times. Uh, April troop C report, we had 340 men calls for service that included 10 accidents, 11 criminal investigations, zero burglaries, two larcenies, 192 non-reportable matters and nine arrests. 129 total traffic stops included three onsite DUIs, four arrests, zero missed three foreign fractions, 24 written warnings and 51 verbal warnings. Our May report was 370 calls for service that included eight accidents, seven criminal investigations, zero burglaries, zero larcenies, 237 non-reportable matters and seven arrests. May included 114 total traffic stops, which was. May included 114 total traffic stops, which was four onsite DUIs, five arrests, or included one misdemeanor summons, 42 infractions, 17 written warnings, and 41 verbal warnings. Unfortunately, due to the threat of severe weather, Wellington Day was canceled. I will tell you that from the committee's perspective, it was not an easy decision. And all of the decisions made were for the safety of everyone attending, attending. I know this meant a loss for some who were planning to go, but I can tell you that our committee chair, Melissa McKinnon, worked extremely hard to put together an incredible event. And everyone was sad to see not only we had to cancel, but then the weather didn't cooperate as bad as we thought. And that happens. So the committee will be discussing the possibility of a late summer or early fall event. So we recognize the importance of this event and always intend to hold it possible. As a note, the Tax Assessor's Office is closed this week due to training. They have annual training in Yukon for a week, and this is that week. And the town office building will be closed next Monday, no, two Mondays from now, June 20th and recognition, recognition of Juneteenth. So our regular meeting will be on Tuesday, the 21st. And a reminder that the tax office will be closed on Thursday, June 30th, for preparation of the end of year closing and the beginning of the tax season on July 1st. I will also note that don't know the date of Eosmith graduation, but I would point folks to Eosmith. Is it the 20?
I just got an email about it.
Yeah, it's the week, it's the week of the 20th, so 20. We'll look on that. And graduation ceremonies at Hall School will be on Friday, the 17th. And again, remind yourself that we each received an invitation to attend. And again, our next meeting will be on
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
June 21st.
June 21st. So seeing no other business before this board, I would entertain a motion, oh.
The 20th, it is the 20th.
It is. So Monday, the 20th, is Eosmith graduations. And Wyndham Tech, I believe Wyndham Tech is also Friday, the 17th, so the same day as Hall School. So my congratulations to all of those students moving forward with their education to those leaving Eosmith, Wyndham Tech, or whatever high school they attended. I wish them good luck in their future endeavors, whether that be college, a technical school, or adult employment. All right, seeing no other matters. Now I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So.